Wednesday. Welcome to the Wednesday, July 1st meeting caucus meeting of the county council. I'll get right into the agenda, but just for the record, council members here, O'Brien, Love, Conti, Igo, council president Ellis, council member Frederick, Hoyey, Lynn, and Anani at this point. We also have staff, C. Blood seven A, Michelle Andre, the city clerk, Daniel Gillespie, and our research council, John Rafael Pichardo, as well as Brett Williams from Corporation Council. So we'll get started, get right to the agenda, going right through. Of course, first, on public hearings, we will have public hearings on ordinance eight forty-one twenty and ordinance fifteen eighty-one nineteen by council members Hoyey and Doche will be amendments to the USDO. So we'll have those hearings. Down to approval meetings minutes from previous meeting, the council meeting minutes for June fifteenth, or June fifteen twenty twenty meeting will be offered for approval. On to consideration of laws, local law G of twenty twenty by Mr. Anani. It's a law amending solid, the chapter thirteen solid waste part of the city code. Mr. Anani is is here, correct?
Yes.
That brief comments, please.
Thank you. So this legislation, you know, as relates to Albany, many people have been complaining about quality of life issues, particularly as relates to litter and trash being in front of private properties or even vacant lots. This legislation is making amendments to cut the days from five, the five business days that most DGS allow business homeowners to take care of their property once the complaint has been levied towards them. So this legislation is cutting the timeframe down from five business days to seventy-three, seventy-three hours, giving them three days to remedy a complaint that has been levied towards their property, whether it's trash or that's in front of their property. So.
Okay, yeah, seventy-two hours, that's going to be referred with general services.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, all right. Next, by council member Balleran, local law H. In relation to the police department.
Yeah, I had a question on the Russo's piece.
Okay.
I think it's going to committee, but okay.
It is going, it is going to committee, but go ahead.
Yeah, and I had actually just reached out to JR on this also in terms of the section you're amending is not the section that actually sets the timeframes for notification and requirements. And so there is another section that you should be amending.
Thank you, Richard. I'll be working with Richard Council and JR too.
Okay, you get the correct section. Okay. Thank you, Richard. Okay, next, local law H of twenty twenty by Mr. Balleran. Prefers to amending Article One, refers to police department statistics and recording of them and gathering them and providing and presenting it to the council. That will be going to public safety, that local law for discussion. So any issues with that, we can, we can go through in the public safety committee for that. Okay. Next, by council member Johnson, local law I. Again, we'll be going to public safety, but it's in relation to use of video cameras and information, implement a policy of city body on and dashboard cameras for police officers and require reporting when the cameras are turned off by a police officer. So that'll, that'll also go to public safety for further discussion. And that was council member Johnson. Next, there are numerous sponsors for local law J. Amending the CPRB, the operation in relation to the CPRB. Mr. Conti, you're the lead sponsor on it. If you care to say something, that's, that's fine. Otherwise, it's, it's going to public safety for further discussion. You're still muted. You're muted.
I'm sorry. This includes the, the recommendations from the CPRB that they made, as well as additional recommendations that were incorporated in there. Some of those do include the subpoena power, which was not one of the CPRB recommendations in that letter they sent, and some other recommendations. Just the memo sets out all the provisions. Be happy to go through them if you want, or if there are any questions.
Again, I think, again, we can handle the questions in the public safety committee, and we can get further into any issues or comments or questions that members might have during that time. It will be with public safety. On next to consideration of ordinances. Okay, we have a couple held that are, Mr. Hoyey's fifteen eighty-one nineteen, that's agenda item five, that we're having the public hearing on the sixth. That'll be up for vote. It's, it's an amendment to the USDO. So that's that. And we've gone further under ordinances held will be eight forty-one twenty by Mr. Doche relating to the green roof and interview efficiency, also an amendment to the USDO, agenda item nine. That will be a public hearing also for Monday, and we'll be voting on that coming the outcome of the hearing. Next. Next, excuse me, under ordinances held will be twelve sixty-two twenty by Mr. Robinson, Mr. Balleran, and Ms. Frederick. That went through the public safety committee recently and came out with a positive recommendation to be forwarded to the full council that will be passed, or we'll be, we'll be voting on that with amendments. Did you have something, Mr. Conti?
I was just questioning the amendment. Was the amendment just a change in the effective date?
Not yes. Yes, it was nine, changed to from thirty to ninety days.
Okay.
Okay, that was the only change. Okay. So that'll be forwarded on. On to consideration of resolutions. By myself, Mr. Conti, it's resolution fifty-nine seventy-one twenty. And we'll be asking for passage. It's a resolution call for emergency relief for tenants based on COVID nineteen. Mr. Anani, I'll give you the floor for a quick comment if you'd like.
Yeah, you know, this pandemic has affected many families. And right now, you know, with unemployment rate as high as it is, many people who are renting are struggling to pay rent. This resolution is going to encourage the state legislature also that individuals who are rent burdened, the way that we could forgive COVID victims could be, the rent could be waived. The governor made an executive order today extending eviction proceedings indefinitely. I think that's a step in the right direction. So we just want to echo some of those sentiments. And I'll thank Kelly for being the lead sponsor on this.
And so also for this, we're calling on the moratorium on evictions until August twentieth. I know the governor did what he did, but also we're seeking a positive affirmation from landlords that are seeking eviction, whether they're complying with the CARES Act. And in addition to that, we're, again, ask it for passage. Any questions, comments on, on that from members? No? Okay, so I will, well, I saw I raised ten. Okay, so we'll be voting on that. Okay, next resolution by council member Flynn and Fahey, it's a sixty seventy-one twenty R, and it's a resolution recognizing, celebrating thirtieth anniversary of Americas with Disabilities Act and July being declared as Disability Pride Month in the city of Albany. Plan is for that to be a pass. Any questions, comments? All, I'm gonna assume all members want to be co-sponsors on that? Yes, I can't, I can't see everyone, so.
Are we doing co-sponsorships from now on, having members just say during the meeting?
Okay, all right, that's, that's fine.
And then introduce.
Okay, all right, it saves the comments, it'll be voted on, sixty seventy-one twenty. Next. What I missed?
No, Kelly, I just wanted to thank the members, the people that helped draft this legislation. You know, this was brought to me by a bunch of members throughout the city of Albany. And I just want to thank them, like Zach Garafalo for helping on this, and Shamika Andrews, and Mike Volkman, who have been very active in this. So I want to thank them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flynn. Also, Mr. Pichardo, I can't, I can't see the whole screen. So if other members have joined, can you add or just voice there, they've joined us? That would be helpful.
Yep, since last, we had councilwoman Doche joining, councilwoman Fahey, and Farrell. That's, everybody's here basically except Johnson and Robinson and Balleran.
Okay, all right, all right. So our next resolution is introduced sixty-one seventy-one twenty R by council member O'Brien. It's reappointing Jessica Wilcox to beg access. We had her here recently before us at a caucus before we appointed her the first time around. So I don't think there's a need to, to recall her. And that will be a pass.
I got a fast question on that, Kelly. So did her term run out between, does it, we just reappoint? I mean, we just.
It was short. Yeah, she should, she filled out, she filled out someone else's. Go ahead, Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, she was appointed, she only had been on for about six months. She was appointed to fill out somebody else's term. So we didn't think it was necessary to reconvene the ad hoc committee to re-interview her.
Okay. So it didn't seem like six months, Mike, because I was, when we first went through, no problem, thank you.
Yeah, it was a short time. Okay, so, all right, okay, on to the next, by Mr. O'Brien, sixty-two seventy-one twenty, resolution to come accounts regarding potential brownfield sites. That's going to be a referral to planning. Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, just briefly, the reason I, I'm introducing this is because of sixty Calvin Avenue. A developer wants to put apartments on sixty Calvin Avenue. And in his application, which was deemed complete, but not voted on yet, he didn't even mention that the twenty thirty plan identifies sixty Calvin Avenue as one of seven in the entire city, potential brownfield cleanup areas. And so the planning department has all the old documents from when the twenty thirty plan was written. They're not available on the website. Planning department must have them still. And this was originally proposed as a school site, and that's what resulted in a lot of the soil testing. And the, the soil tests that the developer proposed don't comport with the soil tests that were done fifteen, twenty years ago. So when I, when asked about that, the planning director opined that it made, in fact, the twenty thirty plan clearly says it was because of contamination that the land didn't develop. The planning director opined that the perception of brownfield may just be that, merely a perception, and there might have been other reasons for it not developing. I think he's trying to set it up that the planning board itself can simply avoid even thinking about the fact that it's a potential brownfield. So this basically says the planning board shouldn't have that authority. And if the twenty thirty plan was an error, then let's have a truly independent process of determining that by the same means by which the twenty thirty plan was passed. And that's the sum and substance of it. And, you know, it'll go to planning, and maybe we can get some more documents, but I don't have them. The planning department has them, and thus far, they haven't found them or made them available anyway.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Okay, to the next resolution, sixty-three seventy-one twenty R, that's mine regarding an IDR bro pilot, some ownership departments. We did this last year, and a few things have changed. And what I'll have, what I'll do is I'll have Mr. Longo speak to what we're doing, and also Mr. Williams, if you want to add to what Mr. Longo says, that'd be great. So Steve Longo.
Steve, you're still muted.
Yeah, I'm trying.
You're muted. Steve, we can't hear you.
How about now?
Perfect, perfect.
Sorry. So thank you for having me back. I'm also joined by our deputy director, Chiquita DiArbo. It's a, it's a great day for us here today, because today, our board announced that, as I'm retiring, that Chiquita DiArbo, the deputy director, has been selected to succeed me. So if, if and when I, and the housing authority comes back before you, you'll have the pleasure of week, working with Ms. DiArbo. So in any event, to get down to business, I know everybody's busy. We were last year asking for a pilot for what we were calling Ida Phase Four. So you can see that the entire super block of IDRboro is rapidly coming to conclusion. We've done phase one and two, in which we tore down one hundred and twenty-four family units, and we've rebuilt a seven-story tower and rebuilt family units in the foreground. Ida Phase Four, which we got the pilot for, was the renovation of two hundred and twenty-four apartments in the two remaining seven-story towers. And we have been working with the state of New York through HFA and HCR to try to get the deal underwritten. But the cost to renovate that building built in the early seventies would not, it would not cash flow and underwrite. So at the state's urging, we've added our North Albany units in, which have less repair work, which lowers the subsidy costs and makes the deal work. So what we're doing here is, we like to, you know, we like to think of each generation has made sacrifices to produce affordable housing. And so in the nineteen seventies, IDRboro was built, and another generation stood up in the early nineteen nineties and renovated it and created another thirty years of viability. We're now stepping up. It's, it needs a massive overhaul along with the North Albany units. And so we've been proposing this bond deal. This bond deal is a ninety-nine million dollar deal. The pilot that we got for IDRboro, we're asking for the same terms for the new combined deal, which the current pilot is ten percent of the residence rent minus utilities, and it was subordinate to debt. So as we discovered at the last pilot discussion, there is substantial debt in the new renovation. This debt is going to be nineteen million dollars. And so with the pilot subordinate, there would be no or zero pilot paid. So the last pilot, when we were here last year, we received a pilot of one percent of the tenant rents. So we're seeking that same arrangement, but we're adding in the one hundred and forty units up in North Albany. So this, in one way, is taking the one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar pilot that Ida and North Albany is now paying, and it is reducing, or the anticipated pilot will be brought down to fifteen thousand dollars during the lifespan of the debt service. And so what we want to say to counter that is that we're providing the next generation with thirty more years of affordable housing, over three hundred and thirty-four units. As you know, New York State does not get anywhere near its share of federal, the return of federal tax dollars compared to what we pay. This is a unique opportunity to get over thirty-three million dollars of federal tax credit money returned to New York and Albany, and thirty-one million dollars of additional subsidy, or over sixty million dollars of subsidy, as well as we have the federal government on the hook, because they have a contract to provide the, the rental subsidy. Last year, these two properties received over one point five million dollars from HUD to offset the cost of what the housing cost to run versus what the affordable rents were. So I'm asking for your consideration to increase the pilot from two hundred and twenty-four to three hundred and thirty-four units at the same, at the same consideration, one percent of the tenant aggregate rent. I would also like to mention that there are one hundred and sixty apartments in North, North Albany, and North Albany, which replaced Corney Homes, which in, in the late nineteen nineties, had eighty, had, has eighty-two family houses and one hundred and sixty units. We're only bringing into this pilot one hundred and forty of the one hundred and sixty units, because we're using this opportunity to do something that we tried to do originally. This is a thirty-acre site. We wanted to new, utilize the latest new urbanism and, and infuse a scattered site homeownership, but we could not, in the late nineteen nineties and early two thousands, we could not get the private capital to do that. So what we're doing now is we're taking ten of the eighty buildings and converting them to home, homeownership. And so in addition to our pilot payment, there would be homeownership, tax payments made by the individual homeowners. I think I've covered it.
Okay, and so I was gonna ask for passage of this, or if need be, we could send it to finance, questions. And I see Mr. Johnson's not here. Actually, he had a few questions. But anyone have questions?
I don't see any, Kelly.
No? Okay. All right, I'll be asking to move it on Monday. Brett, did you want to add anything?
No, on that, really, Mr. Longo covered most of it. In terms of the agreement itself and the resolution to pass it, they're essentially the same as they were last year, just with the addition of forty-one Jennings. And the, they're both fairly similar to the twenty-five Delaware pilot passed at the last meeting. I did have one or two comments on fifty-nine seventy-one twenty R, which was the eviction resolution. I put my hand up a little late for that. So if you don't want to go back, that's fine, but.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we're not, we're not gonna go back right now. All right, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Was that a concern?
I, just the language of the resolution, I know it's a resolution, but the language uses a lot of, I'm trying to scroll back to it quickly, sorry. You know, no orders of eviction will be issued by the Albany City Court. Law enforcement agencies will cease. Landlords shall affirm their compliance. It talks about landlords doing things via affirmation, which, you know, an affirmation and affidavit are sort of specific legal terms of art, but just the terms of the shall language, I'm just concerned that it gives off sort of the wrong impression of what the resolution is actually able to accomplish. I, I think what the council's going for is a more aspirational sort of feel, you know, declaring what the council believes and thinks should happen, but it sort of couches the language in terms of this, as if it actually has force of law. So it just, you know, I don't want people to think that, that is giving them rights or imposing responsibilities that it may not necessarily be legally speaking.
Okay, Mr. Conti, Mr. Longo and Ms. DiArbo, we're all set. So if you all want to leave, thank you very much for that input. Mr. Conti?
I just want to echo Brett's comments on the, the eviction resolution, which really is a lot in there. But we don't have any jurisdictions, I understand, over any city court actions. Correct?
We don't, no.
Yeah, sorry.
And maybe the letter can be revised somewhat to reflect more consistent with what Brett was suggesting.
Okay, I mean, I'm open, and I believe Mr. Anani is, but we're, we're a little bit past that. I wish this stuff had been brought up before in the first time around, but you know.
Yeah, we were running through things quickly.
Okay, all right. So any, any suggested changes? Maybe me and you can talk about, or me, you, and Mr. Anani can, can speak about. I mean, if members weren't comfortable, I think maybe that, that, that should have came up. But we'll, we can, we can talk about. I'm up for making any changes that we may need, okay? So just moving on, so we were at sixty-three, it's the same or similar pilot to last year. Again, I'll be asking for passage on Monday on that one. So moving on to the next resolution, sixty-four seventy-one twenty R by you, Mr. Conti. I have it as a pass. Did you want to say anything about it? Because we're just declaring or allowing planning, the planning board to.
Yeah, this is twenty-five Delaware, which is the Conifer Housing Project that the council previously approved the pilot for. It's before the planning board, it just consents the planning board, serving as lead agency for purpose to seeker.
Okay, so that'll be pass, or we're voting on it on Monday. On to the next resolution by Mr. Flynn and Fahey, resolution sixty-five seventy-one forty R. It's a resolution that come accounts recognizing July, looks like thirteen seventeen, as National Disability Voter Registration Week. And I'd like to put that for, for pass. Mr. Flynn or Ms. Fahey, would you care to speak?
Kathy can speak. I spoke on behalf of the other one, Kathy.
I mean, you don't have to, but you know.
What is this? Which one is this? I don't have the number in front of me here at the.
It's sixty-five seventy-one twenty R, resolution to come accounts recognizing July thirteen through seventeen, twenty twenty, as National Disability Voter Registration Week. You don't, I mean, you don't have to, I mean, it's self-explanatory, but if you care to speak.
Yeah, no, I'm not, that's actually, I don't have anything to say more, more about that. Jack, go ahead.
No, I'm fine. I spoke on the first one earlier, Kathy.
Oh, yeah, I just had one quick question for the sponsors on that. In the title of the resolution, as I received it, it said July thirteenth to seventeenth as National Disability Voter Registration Week. But then in the body of the resolution, it had some different dates. So I just wanted to make sure, and I Googled quickly, and it seemed that thirteenth and the seventeenth were the correct dates. I just wanted to make sure that was the case.
Oh, what was the dates that were in it prior?
I edited them out, so I don't remember. It was like the, it was a shorter period of time. I don't remember exactly. Sorry.
Yeah, it's, if, whatever those, because I was, when I was drafting this, when it was a, that was, it was the thirteenth to the seventeenth is the correct week. That's the one, not the one that was in the box. Sorry.
And also, I could just say something regarding a corp council. Brett, if you see some of these things, you know, jump on it, send us an email. I mean, you work for us. Just share, just share with us a little. for us. So just share, just share with us a little bit early, if you can. So just want to let, let you know.
Okay, that'll be a pass. Okay, next, Resolution 667120R by Mr. Anani for repeal of Albany County Law A of 2016 for the fireworks. Mr. Anani?
Yeah, thank you. We have witnessed an uptick in fireworks, particularly here in the city of Albany and all across the county. Many of the residents are just fed up, and they would like to see some action. I'm glad that the Albany County Legislature is interesting because right when I was about to send my press release, I see the chair and also County Legislature Peters have the press conference about making some amendments to the opt-in during 2016. So I just want to thank them for doing that. So it's self-explanatory, just to repeal the sale of fireworks. Many of the residents in Albany are losing sleep. Veterans who have post-traumatic stress are also receiving a lot of anxiety. I think that this is a step in the right direction. Again, it's not going to solve all the firework problem, but I feel like it's a step in the right direction. And there are some people who are like, well, councilman, there's all the shootings that are occurring in the city. Why don't you focus on that? And I just want to say that we can walk and chew gum at the same time. Since being on the council, I've introduced many legislation as relates to urban blight, I've introduced legislation to address youth unemployment. So the list goes on. So again, this is a resolution to address the quality of life issue that is plaguing our community right now. And so this resolution is calling the county to repeal the legislative, the local law A.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anani. They'll be up for a vote on Monday. Next resolution held, oh, excuse me, on to resolution held, Resolution 516220R. Excuse me?
The MC for the equipment, 67?
I don't have it.
Hold on, I have it. One second.
I have, oh.
I just don't want to forget about it.
Right, yeah, no, we need to, to get that done. You gotta put it up.
Michelle, I think I have it. Oh, you have it, okay.
Shrink this window so I can see it. Okay, Resolution by Mr. O'Brien, it's an MC, we're requesting an MC for 677120, requesting the Board of Contract and Supply to advertise the test specifications to replace the current equipment in the common council chamber and create a mobile media card. And the thing is, once we go back out online and we're back in our chambers, we want, want to keep and maintain the ability to, to reach out. I mean, we've got in these recent months, more participation, I think, than we've gotten in a long time in, in our meetings, and we want to maintain that. And this will help us to, to deal with that. Mr. O'Brien, you want to, you want to speak?
Yeah, yeah. The, the PEG Access Board reviewed a whole plan for equipment, and the money comes from money that we originally got from Time Warner 10 years ago. And I believe then they had both DTS and Corp Counsel and the RIT unit review it. And I believe they signed off on the recommendations that the, that the PEG Access Board made. And I forget the exact total amount, but it's, it's, I believe it's just under $100,000.
Thank, thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Any members have questions?
Mr. Conti's hands up.
I'm sorry, Mr. Conti.
It actually wasn't on this. I had my hand up for the fireworks one. So at the risk of having my comment dismissed by Mr. Anani, I'll pass.
No, Richard, go ahead. What's your, what's your question?
Please, Mr. Conti, just your comment. You reviewed it.
Fireworks piece? Are we talking about just the sale or the sale and use?
It's a, it's, the resolution is, is asking the county legislator to repeal the law in its entirety because the way, and I was in contact with the county legislator, it's, you can't, you have to just, it's the way the, I think it was Local Law A of 2019?
2016.
2016.
2016, sorry. Yes, I have it in front of me. You have to repeal it in its entirety. So it repeals the entire use and sale.
Right, so we're repealing the sale and use?
Yes.
Okay, the resolution doesn't reflect that. That was my question.
John Raphael, can you add that amendment to it? Thank you, Mr. Conti.
And the fireworks that are creating the problem are not the ones that were legalized by Local Law A. Local Law A is a contributing factor to increase some of the confusion. So I don't know if you wanted to deal with some of that in the resolution, but just an observation.
If I could, if I could add on to what Mr. Conti is saying, it wouldn't be a need for a new local law if the police were enforcing, you know, they're, they're riding by the fireworks show. So that's, that's a concern that I have, that I would, I will, I will hope that would be heard, is that we need to send a message that it's not okay to shoot fireworks off at 2:00 in the morning, and you don't have to worry about the police coming. That's a bigger, you know, that's a quicker fix. They're getting a green light to, you know, have fireworks shows throughout the city.
And also, I'd like to, you know, shed those sentiments too. Syracuse has actually dedicated at least five police officers whose sole job is to deal with the fireworks, and they have witnessed a decrease in fireworks. They have made several arrests and also confiscations. So I, you know, I want to echo that sentiment by Mr. Johnson, that the police, yes, we have gun violence issue in the city of Albany. Yes, there's been several shootings and deaths that have occurred, but we could also address the quality of life issue that is plaguing our city. Many people in this city are moving out in droves because of the gun violence. They're also moving out because of the quality of life issue as relates to the fireworks also. So again, we could pass legislation and also enforce these, enforce these legislation. But from the press conference by the county legislators, the chairman Joyce, is that because of the opt-in, the police officers are having a difficult time dealing with making an arrest because of the opt-in. But again, this is something that I think we have to make it very clear that fireworks in the city and county in the state of New York is illegal, and we have to enforce these laws. And if we're not enforcing these laws, we're not, others is going to open up the can of worms for other illegal activities.
Thank you, Mr.
Can I, can I just, just, as well, on this topic, I understand at that particular press conference, the mayor also indicated that she was taking some actions and meeting with associate, neighborhood association presidents and had some kind of a door hanger that was being distributed with information that residents can report or something along those lines. I don't know if, if that's something that the council will be made aware of, or if we would get some additional information, or if that's come up in any leadership meetings.
Yeah, that's interesting.
It hasn't.
Okay, so to reach out to your county legislators for the pamphlets, I was actually going to ask that question. Thanks for asking that.
Right. I, well, apparently they're, it's being distributed to the neighborhood association presidents to distribute. And I just was wondering if somehow the council could see what it is.
Yeah, well, I'll make a call to try to track down and.
Sometimes council members have more contact with residents and neighborhood association presidents.
Yeah. So, okay, so moving on to resolutions held.
Wait, wait, wait.
What did I miss? Go ahead, Judy, we can hear you.
Please go to your chat room, and then raise your hand so people can see your hands being raised. You go to participate.
I, I'm a little confused as to what I'm supposed to do because I was told I was supposed to do it on the, on the, on the program. So I did that, or at least I thought I did that. Anyway, this, this is about, you had asked for comments on the MC. And Richard, we went back to the other. So are we done with the MC?
Do you want to make a comment on the MC?
No, I, I, I just want to get a little bit of clarification as to what experts were, you know, what, what was the process for determining this? I know nothing about how to fix the problems in our chambers. So I am hoping that this is getting fixed, and I appreciate the fact that there was a committee. So I was just thinking that maybe we could get a little bit of information about what is it that is going to be done? How sure are we that this is going to fix the very difficult audio problem, not only for council members, but I think even more importantly, for observers at our council meetings. It's very difficult to be in the audience. I, you know, I've done that in the past, and sometimes I attend other board meetings in our council chambers, and it can be very hard to hear people in the dais and, you know, at, at the council seats. So I'm just wondering, how sure are we, you know, what was the process and how sure are we that this is going to fix our problems?
So, yes, Michael, Mike, can you speak to that? Danielle's been working on the, on that issue also.
I'll get the copy of the report that the PEG Access Committee did. I don't recall, I'm not sure what experts, but obviously the PEG Access actually selected very specific equipment. And I'm sure the report gives a justification for that. I'll get a copy and send it to Michelle to distribute to everybody.
My, the report is with the legislation. The report, along with the bid specifications, are with the legislation and had been sent out under separate cover. I think you had mentioned, Mr. O'Brien, the PEG Access and the equipment, and then it was resent out with the different levels of packages that were looked at. There was a gold, a silver, and a bronze, you know, gold being the most expensive. And I think bronze may have been the least expensive.
Yes.
The committee itself met, and then we went to other municipalities, and we spoke with them, along with Channel Albany, ZEB, and we kind of sort of looked at ways that other municipalities were leveraging their equipment to produce high-quality video and improve transparency. And then we also, in addition to going to Proctors, we also went to a religious institution to see how they were live streaming, because the experts at Proctors had mentioned that what we were trying to do, a lot of churches and synagogues who have congregants that live outside of the immediate area were already doing with a high level of success. After all of the field trips, for lack of a better word, were conducted, then a report was put together based on conversations and recommendations from local area experts. And that report was shared with common council members. That report was also shared with Corporation Council, the Department of General Services, the Chair of PEG Access, and the IT Department, so that they were able to provide feedback as to the sustainability, if we were to make the purchase, who had the expertise and skillset to do the installation. And based on the dollar amount and current general municipal law, if, if this would be appropriate going through the Board of Contract and Supply, it was determined to go through the Board of Contract and Supply, and a member of the Corporation Council's team put together a bid specification highlighting the goal package. And that is where we are today.
Terrific. Thank you for that explanation. I saw the report. I, I know that Michelle had sent us something, but finding the time to read that level of detail. And again, since I'm not an expert, I wanted just to make sure that we're doing our due diligence. And I, as you were talking, I was recalling about the field trips that were made, which is really extraordinary, and, and does give me, what you have said and what you and Michelle and others have done, really gives me a great deal of confidence that we're making the right decisions. And we'll keep our fingers crossed, because as things get installed, there can always be little wrinkles that you don't necessarily anticipate based on the particular space that you deal with, et cetera. But again, I want to just thank you all for what you and Michelle have done, especially with regard to this, and, and for answering my question precisely without the, now you can go read this and report. I have the confidence with what you told me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Like, okay, moving on to resolutions held by Mr. Johnson. It's a Resolution 516220R. It's Agenda Item 10. It's a resolution honoring Ruby Hughes and renaming the place after her. That, that'll be a pass, or we'll be voting on it. It went to the General Services Committee and came out with a positive recommendation. So we'll be looking to pass that.
I just wanted to clarify, because I was going through it, was this being amended to remove from Ruby Hughes' place to Ruby Hughes' way?
That's correct, that.
Okay, I wanted to make sure I didn't, I didn't mess that up. Okay, so I'll make those adjustments.
Okay, thank you for that. So that, that would be the amendment. Okay, next resolution is 536220R by Mr. Flynn. It's Agenda Item 11, also went through the General Services Committee, or the Joint Committee. And Mr. Flynn, you want to speak to that, or Mr. O'Brien? Either of you care to?
I just want to thank all for a great, helpful discussion on it. I think everybody got informed by a lot of information, and, and I think we're going to flow with some good ideas and suggestions for the course going forward. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. O'Brien?
No, just to repeat what Jack said, I think the concept was good. There was an amendment as to how the committee is going to be constituted. It's going to be the same members as our members of the Parks Rec Committee and the General Services Committee. And it specifies that we should meet at least minimally quarterly, but obviously we can raise issues as often as, as we, as we think necessary.
Thank you. Okay, that'll be voted on on Monday. Next resolution held is by myself. It's Agenda Item 12, Resolution honoring William Hank Wallace and renaming the Portion of Large Street William Hank Wallace Way. That also went through the General Services Committee and was discussed and came out with a positive recommendation, and that will be voted on, will be a pass for that. So unless someone has a question or comments about what we've discussed so far, that's it for the agenda. What I'd like to do is, Mr. Flynn?
No, I didn't know if you were going to join the meeting. I just wanted to thank.
No, 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 we, we still, we still have the.
Well, I just want to let them know, I want to thank Sonia Fredericks. She just won her first board common council seat the other day, so I just want to congratulate her publicly.
Yep, yep, we're not quite there yet. Being, I want to have Deputy Chief Hogan, he's here, and I apologize, chief. Just give us the updates on the, the goings on here in the city.
Sure. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. Yeah, I'm here just to give you a basic briefing. I'm here on behalf of the chief. In the month of June, obviously, as you know, we had a significant spike in shots fired in the city and shootings. In June alone, we saw 49 confirmed shots fired. That's confirmed shots fired where we find, you know, credible evidence such as video and/or physical evidence such as casings on the ground. Out of those 49 confirmed shot fired, it was actually 25 actual shootings where somebody was shot, and a total of 38 victims in the month of June here in the city of Albany, unfortunately. Compared to 2019, we only had the four, four people shot in, in the month of June last year. So year-to-date totals compared to the two, obviously, we are, we are up quite a bit. We're not only We're not only seeing an increase in incidents of shooting, but we're seeing an increase of the actual numbers of people shot at particular incidents. So that seems to be a trend with other GIV jurisdictions in, in New York State. You know, there's 20 other jurisdictions within 17 counties of New York that receive funding for the state for the gun violence elimination initiatives. They are all seeing also these spikes in shootings. For instance, GIV jurisdictions reported a 40% increase through May 2020 as compared to last year. So we are seeing a lot of that. So that kind of gives us a little perspective that it's not just here in the city of Albany, but that it is, you know, a statewide issue. Obviously, we've talked about COVID-19 having some effect on our police operations. Also, I think, you know, more importantly, it's had a large effect on the family and communities here in the city with high unemployment and then, you know, some opportunities for some, you know, just simple stuff, medical stuff, mental health stuff, you know, drop in support groups, schools, churches. There's been not a lot of community stuff for folks to do. So we're, you know, we're looking forward, obviously, to the, to the state opening up. We are working very well with our partners. Probation and parole, New York State Police, the Albany County Sheriff's Department, to bring some strategies in here to hopefully reduce some of the gun violence during the summertime here coming up. We, our, our members have also been doing some outstanding work with some of the gun violence since, since roughly mid-March. We've had 18 gun violence arrests for adults and seven gun violence arrests for juveniles with a total of four murder arrests for, for those guys. So we are closing those cases out. Also, the shots fired cases, we're probably clearing about 20% clearance rate on our shots fired cases where there's an actual evidence on the ground. So those guys are doing an excellent job. And again, we're, we're open to hearing suggestions. We are working very diligently. We are taking it very serious. We are working with the partners that we have. We have great support. And, you know, we are, we are putting out strategic patrols, some static patrols in certain areas that seem to be largely affected to kind of divert and deter some crime over there. So we basically have a strategy of, of looking at people. As you know, some, some folks are responsible, small group of folks tend to be responsible for a lot of the gun violence here in the area. So we are looking to focus on those folks, those areas, and come up with good, smart strategies to combat that.
Okay, thank you, chief. Members have questions?
Sir Howie?
I can't hear you, sir. Tom, you're muted.
Sorry. One of the problems up here in the 15th Ward is traffic violations. And, you know, I understand the shortage of police and the, I think what I've heard is that the Traffic Enforcement Division no longer works or it's been cut down some. I'm just wondering, because now we're working with the county, with the sheriff and with the state police. Is there any way we could get like the state police to take over the traffic enforcement in the city, especially on state roads? And I'm even thinking with the county, on the county roads. But we definitely need help. We have people running stop signs, running red lights that don't have cameras. That's the biggest complaint I'm hearing up by me. I don't hear about fireworks. I don't hear about gunshots, but what I am hearing about is there's a lot of traffic violations. And we have a lot of kids who play, we don't have sidewalks up here, so the kids end up playing on the streets. So that's why the traffic is very concerning to, to the residents in my area.
Absolutely. And, and we take that very seriously as well. We have actually increased our number of traffic officers. Unfortunately, you know, with, with COVID, we, we scaled folks back a little bit. But also with some of the marches that we've had going through the city has forced us to rededicate our traffic safety officers to those marches to, you know, help guide the folks to the streets because it's very dangerous, you know, with the large crowds moving throughout the, throughout the city here. And basically, I think once we get past some of that stuff and, you know, we make some change, some positive changes and, and that stuff changes for us, we will be getting back to some of the basic traffic enforcement. And that is one of the main strategies that we are looking to use as well, is the traffic enforcement. And again, we, we have upped our numbers that we, we heard loud and clear that that was one of the complaints from some of the communities is that traffic enforcement is very, very important.
You really haven't addressed my big question. Why aren't we getting our partners in the county and the state? I mean, we all pay taxes to the state, we pay taxes to the county, and there's law enforcement there. And there seems to be a pushback, and I brought this up with the chief. Why is there such a pushback to do joint policing? That, and what I've heard, I have, I have friends who are in the union, with the police union, and their thing is, well, this is our city. We understand it more than somebody else. But this is Albany County, and I mean, this is New York State. And sometimes we get parochial that we think, well, this is, why is there such a resistance to asking our partners to help us?
I mean, I, I think a good example is that, I mean, we're doing just that now. We have, we have the state police here in the city. They are doing some enforcement on our, around our highways, our egress and ingress to the cities. Also, you know, we have invited the Sheriff's Department in here to help us with patrol as well. They're doing some two-man patrols with us and they're also doing some solo patrol stuff. So they, they are out there. We're open to the idea. We're, we're, you know, we're welcoming that, that stuff right now. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to echo Tom, Thomas Howie's statement. I, I know that in certain communities, they, they believe that it's too much policing. I would say if that's the case, you could try to redirect some of these police officers into neighborhoods that have been neglected. You know, some of the residents in my neighborhood cannot remember the last time they saw a police officer, you know? So I think that we also pay taxes, although we haven't seen witness shootings in the Pine Hill's neighborhood. We would like to see police officers on the beat, patrolling our, our neighborhood. I also want to, Officer McGee, the Union President, if you could also tell him that he's more than welcome anytime to come and speak to the Common Council as it relates to any solutions or any suggestions that he has for us to address the violence that, and uptick in violence that we're witnessing here. So if you could share that with him, that would be great. Also, again, when we ask for state troopers or ask for sheriffs to come into the city, it's not that we don't have faith in the police officers. We do have faith in the police officers. We want to make sure that you guys are safe. So having an extra eye out there in the community is not a hit on the police officers. So again, I agree with Councilmember Howie that I'm all in support of whatever assistance that we can use, whether it's the sheriff's office or whether it's state troopers in all the communities. So I just want to echo that.
I appreciate that, sir. Absolutely.
Deputy Chief. It's Kathy Fahey. I wanted to ask you a little bit more about these shootings. Do you have a sense of, believe me, I understand about people are shut in and there's no eyes on the street and all of that. But in addition to that, have you determined, are some of the shootings drug-related? Are they gang-related? Can you give us more information about the shootings?
Sure. I mean, each, each case, obviously, is, is its own individual case. We do have some cases where there is an argument, whether it's drug-related, whether it's over personal relationships or, you know, people insulting each other over social media. We, we've had some of that stuff. And then generally what happens is, you know, one group, a particular group will go and they will shoot at an individual or a group of other people. And then there'll, there'll be the secondary retaliatory act that happens. Unfortunately, right now, what we saw was, as there wasn't a lot of people out on the street as witnesses and, and such that a lot more shots were being fired. So we were having more, more people shot in, in instances. So I can't really pinpoint and say that it's, it's gang or drug-related. I, I would definitely say that it really depends on the case. You know, a lot of times we find that there's, there's no good, solid reason for why one group is firing another or that they, they don't know exactly, just that they, they, they didn't get along at one point. So there's, there's definitely some of that. But some of it is a lot of personal vendetta, people thinking that they're wronged by the other person, to be quite honest.
Thank you.
Judy has her hand up? Ms. Dushay?
All right. So in my neighborhood, people, all right, they're witsen, I think, with the firecrackers, fireworks. I, when I was nine months pregnant and not getting much sleep, my doctor said, you know, that can cause psychosis. And I do feel like people's mental health and wellbeing is being dramatically affected by this. And I remain a little bit confused as to what the police department is doing about this. I have shared with people that they're supposed to call the non-emergency number. I've provided that information. I've asked them if they can provide a location. I have one constituent who has had huge firecrackers going off on either side of her house, two doors down. You know, on one night and then two nights later, you know, the other. And the most of, in one case, she got a response where the police drove by. They didn't make any inquiry. You know, they didn't stop, they didn't get out of their car, look around, et cetera. And she had identified that it was either the house next to her or two houses away. So the, she found the lack of inquiry to be distressing. And then I think it was last night, there was no response to this. And I, and I'm, I'm hearing, you know, saying things from residents all across my ward. I think in some cases, what she's complaining about is what some of the residents three blocks over are complaining about. And this is going on at 10 o'clock at night, 11 o'clock at night, 2 o'clock in the morning. And one of the things I don't get is while people say, well, there's this ambiguity in the county law, this is all clearly a violation of our noise ordinance. And if not, then I want to know what we need to do as a council in order to make it clear that this is actionable, that, that this is a violation, et cetera. Now, in my updates, I've asked people to, if they're shooting these off, to please keep in mind that their next-door neighbor doesn't necessarily welcome this and is not volunteered to show up at their fireworks show. And that this is dangerous and against the law. But asking them to consider their neighbors, because I understand that, you know, in the first instance, you want to make people, you know, conscious to some extent. But there's a lot of people who aren't going to care. So we do need for the police to be actively looking at these situations, bothering to get out of their car and educating people regarding the noise ordinance and, and, you know, what they're doing with regard to locally, whether it violates local law A. In most cases, I would imagine it does. So what is the police doing about this?
So I, I hear you loud and clear and I, we've heard a lot of complaints about the fireworks and, and we do take them serious. I can't remember a time in my career that there's been so many fireworks here in the city. It seems like, I don't know where they're coming from. You know, obviously out of state, I think a lot of this stuff is coming in now closely from like New Hampshire. But, you know, I think the law changes will help us out. I do think we can do, I do think we can do a better job with some of the enforcement stuff for the noise ordinance. That, that's a good suggestion. I appreciate that suggestion. We, I will look at what our response is to the fireworks calls. We are getting an inordinate amount of calls for, of service for that. So that is, that is something we'll definitely look at. I think, you know, part of what has contributed to it is the fact that, you know, the Fourth of July fireworks festivities are canceled and people are just, you know, using their fireworks continuously right now. So we, we will look at it. I appreciate the suggestion. I will talk to our patrol supervisors and see if we can do a better job with fireworks going forward.
Yes, chief, before we, Sonya Fredericks has, before we get to Sonya, I, I have to make this point and it's very, it's critical. These are not fireworks that people are just running around the city setting them off at different places. These are fireworks displays. So it's hard for me to understand how no one has been sighted, no one has been brought up on anything with. These are fireworks displays. We had two major displays of fireworks. One, one in the middle of Central Avenue and no one was taken, charged, nothing. Police came, rode by. We had a major firework display, illegal, in Washington Park. I'm pretty sure that neighborhood was calling all night. Later, at, in the middle, the next day, you see these big fires. So they, they camped out there. They set off these illegal fireworks and we did not issue one, explain that. I'm pretty sure those people got those, they, the, the police department got those calls. These were not people who picking up, running. They had fireworks displays, like it was a major firework carnival that they had the right to do. How, if we can't prevent that, there's something wrong here. There's, there's something wrong. These were major displays. These weren't like somebody shooting them off and moving on to the next place. Cops come, they run. These were camped out, major, like, like they have a deposit. Can you explain how no one was sighted in that Washington Park incident? Because I know they called and Richard Cuddy probably could attest to that. I mean, that's his aim, what I saw the next day.
Yeah, I think, I think the Washington Park incident in particular was a difficult incident for us because there was a lot of tension in the community that night. We had just had a big rally. We also just had, you know, the two incidents at South Station and at Headquarters with, you know, with some members of the community. So I think, you know, that was associated with one of the marches that had went down through the city earlier that day. And I think, you know, given the circumstances, we had kind of made a decision that, you know, we were going to monitor that activity. But we weren't going to necessarily chase anybody around in Washington Park in the middle of the night over the fireworks. So that, that was kind of the decision that was, that was made. That falls upon me. But again, going forward, I, I, I will hear what you're saying. I hear you guys loud and clear. We, we will look into the fireworks issue more seriously.
Thank you for that, that answer, that honest answer. Thank you. I really appreciate that. I think sometimes we get lost when our law enforcement officers do tell us, hey, this is what happened. We have to accept it and they said they're going to do better and we move on. So thank you. Ms. Fredericks has her hand up and then Ms. Farrell has her hand up.
Yep, thank you. Hi Deputy Hogan, thank you for being here tonight. Just wanted to also express my frustration on the topic of fireworks since we're on it right now. I've had many constituents call the non-emergency line and just want to let you know that the feedback I received is that they are very, the individuals that answer that line seem to write off a firework call at 2:00, 3:00 AM in the morning. They give sort of nonchalant responses that they'll look into it and then nothing happens. And that's very concerning. I think council members have already echoed the fact of PTSD. PTSD comes in many different forms, veterans, people of domestic violence abuse, people that have had gunshots and things happen in the past. So I'm curious if you have any increased plans for the upcoming holiday weekend? Just expecting fireworks to be more populous, even more so throughout the city?
We do. We, we've increased our patrol numbers for the weekend. We've added some detail officers for the weekend. Uh, we've added some detail officers, uh, for the weekend for, obviously for the violence and we, you know, for, for the firework activity. And we have a, uh, we'll have a four man team out with a supervisor that will be doing some of the firework abatement, uh, issues as well. So I will, I will look into the non-emergencies, uh, number stuff. I will tell you that a lot of the calls are going in because we look at the numbers for those calls. Um, and we, we, again, we've seen a dramatic increase this year, more, more than I've ever seen. Um, so.
Thank you Deputy Hogan. Um, Joe Eichel, I think has a question. Joe?
Chief, uh, I had one concern. We paid a lot of money to have streetlights put in and supposedly we were supposed to, supposed to be smart streetlights. We put cameras on them, turn up the lighting and everything. Have they been installed? Do you see any help if they have been at this point?
So I, I don't believe we're at that phase yet of, of, uh, of using the cameras for the smart streetlights. Uh, we do have a series of cameras throughout the city that we use, uh, that are obviously very helpful for, for a lot of things, but the streetlight ones are not, not up yet.
Another question I have, uh, I think the last stats we had from the police department, you were down 50 officers and I see you've just had quite a few retirements. What are we down to now? And that's not including the 30 that they swore into the academy, but.
Right. So the last numbers I had as of the 30th, and it, it would include those folks, uh, I believe are down 36.
Down 36?
Yeah.
We were told before we're down 50. So you must be counting the 30 that went into the new academy?
Yeah, that's counting them and then some retirements. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Farrell?
Thanks. I just, uh, wanted to note on the, the Washington Park firework thing. I was at a community meeting, um, in the Arbor Hill, uh, by the basketball court, by the Arbor, Arbor Hill softball fields. And there was a similar, right before they started the community meeting, they were sweeping up a similar size firework thing. So that wasn't an anomaly. It's happening in other places throughout the city and it shouldn't be seen as an anomaly because maybe that space was an anomaly for that, but it's happening everywhere to that degree. And you have to look for it. Cause, um, I, I mean, everybody just swept it up like it was no big deal, but it was, it was that size and it is a big deal.
Okay.
That's it.
I'm certainly not saying it's not a big deal. I understand.
No, and that, I just, you were saying it was like an anomaly and, and that, that's, it's not. So.
Thank you.
Mr. Nani?
Yes, um, can you, uh, break down like the, the racial makeup of, uh, individuals who's in the academy, going to the academy right now as relates to police officers?
I do not have that data in front of me, sir. I can certainly get that to you. I can email it to you or I can email it to.
Michelle. Yeah.
Yes.
That'd be great. Um, and I'll ask this because diversity within our police department is a huge issue. And many of us on the council talk about this year in and year out. Corey has been talking about having a cadet program that starts at the middle school level. Um, and you see the recent, uh, you know, I, I, I witnessed some of the pictures and also got, uh, to see the, the cadets. You know, we talk about diversity, but I think it's time that we make a concentrated effort as it relates to improving the, the lack of diversity that exists in the police department. So if you could share with us and also, uh, maybe just, you know, communicate to the chief that this is something that we're really passionate about, that we want to see some improvement. And if there's anything that the council could do to improve these numbers, uh, uh, we're open to it. So if you could send us the racial background, uh, makeup to, uh, our legislative, that would be great.
Absolutely. No problem.
Well, who's who, just to jump in, um, during the meeting that we had with the police chief last Saturday with County Ledge, I asked that similar question. His answer was three minorities out of 30.
Wow.
Right, right. And just real, real quick. So again, the, the purpose for the chief or who says it need to be here was for this meeting was for updates on, uh, the violence. So I, 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 I think maybe.
Well, well Kelly, you know, if we have diversity, that matters.
I get, I get, I, I, of course it does matter, but again, uh, those, uh, numbers and.
If you have somebody that look like you, you could tell them where all the violence is happening.
Does that mean that I don't get to, uh, say our concerns?
Yeah, sure. No, it doesn't mean that you do. I'm just speaking to him not being prepared to answer some of the questions because that's not what we asked.
You know, like I didn't prepare to ask him this question, but I'm listening to his response. And so like, um, you know, we've been having a firework problem for the last three years. And, you know, um, I don't want to be out there as a, uh, as, as a, um, resident videotaping police riding by fireworks going off, you know, but I also don't want to sit here at the table and listen to like, we don't know what's going on, you know, because we're not addressing it, it's becoming a bigger problem. We not going to blame it on, um, the, uh, fireworks because it, this stuff has been going on for two months. You know, uh, and it's videos. We have people in the community that are video, video recording this stuff. So like, you know, this is, uh, kind of a ongoing response that we're hearing to anything that comes from the, you know, from the community or the, um, the workers, like, you know, like we don't know what's going on. And, and so we, we, we would expect in a second war and, and throughout the whole city that, um, um, there's a plan that's going to be effective immediately because these calls are, 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 are unrelentless. And even when you walk through the city, the, um, conversation is unrelentless about fireworks.
Okay.
So thank you for letting me, um, you know, voice the second words, um, concerns about it because we see the police riding by all the time.
And Deputy Chief, I think, I think the message we're trying to send, you know, you were honest about what happened at Washington Park. If that's going to be the, you know, whoever makes that decision, that's going to be the decision that's going to be made. If you say, hey, because of what's going on, we, we're not trying to interact at this. If you, if we can have that discussion, they have to be on, but if we know that, that's different. Um, and if, and if the command staff feels like, you know, their hands are being tied and if they go too far, people, we want to be able to, uh, stand up for you guys doing your job properly. And so for what we're seeing to be saying or seen to be seen is like, because of everything else going on, we don't want to engage that way. Because I, as Mr. Johnson said, there's too many videos of people watching our, our officers drive by. Uh, when they report. So if that's the tactic we're going to take, I mean, the leadership of the council needs to be alerted at least so that we understand, so, so we can be advocates for, uh, the job you guys do. When we, we know it's tough right now with every, we understand that. We do, we understand our police department right now. They don't want to seem heavy handed. We want to, we get it. But when it comes to the quality of life issues, uh, we, we have to have a, 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 a plan and a way to deal with it. Because for me, what that tells me is this, if we can't prevent people from violating, uh, police officers' interactions with individuals, can't be, uh, a way to de-escalate fireworks going off, how can we de-escalate real issues between individuals? Uh, and so that, that, that's another conversation, but it's fireworks. They're legal. And if our officers can't approach people in the correct way to get them to de-escalate or, or, you know, citation people, then we have a huge problem. But we want to be advocates for you, uh, on this. Uh, I'm pretty sure every council member in every ward would stand with you, uh, on, 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 on what is going to be the actions our, our officers are going to take when it regards to, uh, fireworks. And I'm pretty sure you'll have majority, all the support of council members. We know what the, the, the plan of action is for it. And I see Ms. Frederick's hands is up again. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, just redirecting the conversation back to the violence. I had a question about, the state and the other local police forces that are coming in to assist. I heard that they're riding along with Albany police, policemen, policewoman. Is that indefinitely until they go back to their normal services? Are they doing that for a short period of time? And then they're going to patrol on their own?
Uh, we, we've had conversations with them that they're offering their services until we tell them to scale back or that we're, we're able to, um, you know, we're able to move forward, uh, with normal operations. Again, some of it is, um, the, the, the times that, that, that we are living in right now and the fact that, um, there are times where it's safer, obviously for officers to have a partner. So this is a good opportunity for us to have, um, our officers have, uh, an extra set of eyes with them. You know, uh, routines, crime scenes now, or, you know, routine incidents, even traffic accidents, tend to generate a lot of people coming to the scene, um, to, to look and to comment. Um, and, you know, some of them are antagonistic. Um, some of them are, are just there out of curiosity, obviously. Um, and, you know, this is a good opportunity as well for us, um, to make sure that our guys are, are safe. And, and, you know, it's great to have those partnerships. But they are, they're, they're, they're there until, um, they've, they've given us, um, an agreement basically that they're around until, until we don't need them.
Okay. Thank you. Will they always be paired with an Albany officer or will they be able to patrol on their own? Or are they patrolling on their own already?
There are, there are some state police that are obviously, um, as I spoke earlier, that are patrolling, um, uh, on their own. And then there are some, uh, of the sheriffs that are also in single person cars that are, that are out there as well. Um, and, and again, both of them have jurisdiction. Albany County obviously has jurisdiction in the county and the state has state jurisdiction. So at any time they, they can be in the city. So.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I think we had a conflicting message previously. So thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you Deputy, uh, Chief Hogan. Uh, really appreciate this. I know you were, you know, uh, not the chief, but we really appreciate, you know, you, you come in and answer honestly and openly. Uh, so I think with that, I'll send it back to Kelly Kimbrough.
Yeah, yeah. And so what I would actually say, uh, along the lines of the fireworks and, and, uh, having Albany County repeal, that's a person that actually had a bit of experience enforcing fireworks laws. Uh, the repeal is going to help because right now, uh, all fireworks are allowed. So, um, having an officer discern between what's legit and what's not, and it, it just, it adds, it adds confusion if, if, if no fireworks are allowed beyond sparklers, you know, and of course we have commercial shows, which those, those folks are licensed. It would be really, really helpful, uh, to the police department to only, uh, it would allow them to focus. If there's fireworks going on, we go, we confiscate them and then, you know, do the proper paperwork and and work through that stuff. But right now with the way the law is written, it, it makes it really difficult uh, for officers to enforce. And of course I wouldn't, I'm sure most members wouldn't want to see a video on YouTube or Facebook or whatever, where an officer is intervening, trying to correct some issues around fireworks and have someone get hurt or see them rolling around on the ground or God forbid someone get shot. You know, during that interaction. So I, I think, uh, the county repealing would be very helpful in, uh, moving forward. It, it would make the Albany Police Department and law enforcement in general in the city enforcing fireworks laws, it'd make the job, uh, a lot easier. So, um, that, that's that. What I would like to do, and I know members are trying to get out of here, uh, is have, uh, Ms. Farrell do the updates, both the finance, financials and, and our, our leadership, uh, meeting updates. So will you do that for us, Ms. Farrell?
Absolutely. Um, so, and in terms of the budget, um, we have not gotten anything from the mayor's office. As everyone remembers, we were in a situation where we were looking at a nearly $18 million cut from our current budget. And, um, they are now, uh, optimistic that they're going to get funding from the federal government. They believe it's not a matter of if, but when. Um, and they'll, they are expecting to see something soon after the Fourth of July. So there is still spending freeze in place. And we should be getting, um, some updates from Mike Wheeler soon. They said that the 2019 fund balance came in higher than expected. And they are looking to, in terms of, so the pools, everyone knows the pools are opening. They will be only open to city residents and there's going to be limited capacity with them when they do open. Um, and they're likely to do it in shifts because they're going to have to kind of do social distancing things with that. They did say if, you know, if there's somebody within a family, they're not going to like turn away somebody if it, you know, if your family member from Troy comes with you, it's fine. But in general, most of the pools in the area are closed. So, um, we want to make sure that those pools are open for Albany residents. We also, most of our discussion was on the, um, police reform committee. It doesn't have an official name yet that was mandated by the governor's office to look at, uh, police reforms within Albany. And what the makeup of that will be. Um, so we, uh, they're expecting to have at least 30 people in it. There are mandated pieces to it. So in terms of, uh, internal or not internal, but in terms of, I would say county level, they're looking at someone from the district, well, the district attorney, the public defender's office, probation, victim services, mental health. She talked about the importance of making sure that probation was effectively working, that there's a lot of issues in pre-trial services. Um, and making sure there's the same level of oversight and support during pre-trial services as there is during probation. Um, and also a need to understand what's happening really at the county level to make sure that that's supporting the work that's happening in the city. In terms of representation from the police force, um, I, I know that we've talked about at, at least some members and internally about, um, exactly where the police union is and, um, there's an Article 78 proceeding against the current head. So who, who is actually representative? So they're going to have, um, the chief will be involved, the two deputy chiefs. So I'm assuming we'll see Mr. Hogan there. And, um, patrol, then it'll be representative from patrol, from the sergeants and lieutenants and the detectives. They're also going to, um, talk about, uh, they, we also talked about community groups. One of the big issues with community groups is there are so many of them. So she talked about, she's still working through exactly what those community groups will be, but definitely Act PAC, CPRB, Human Rights Commission and SNUG. There's a lot of other possibilities and, um, I would say if there's any specific groups that you believe, uh, should be involved, then, um, I would recommend to share that with, uh, David Gallin and to kind of let him know if there's any other ideas that you have on that. She also talked about, it's kind of a challenge because there's a lot of really great groups. So they were talking about having specific topic meetings or a series of meetings where, um, more community groups would be involved. So to kind of have that input. Um, the school district will also be participating with it. And, um, and the, the expectation that they're having is to, um, have this group would get its own set of implicit bias training and have some training so they can kind of go into the process and, um, have like a really meaty process to get some good reforms in the end. One of the things we talked about within, uh, leadership is we really wanted to make sure that it was something that, um, as many members and members of the public could watch and participate as possible. The mayor talked about how sometimes it's difficult to talk about certain things and she wanted an open process. So having something that was very public might be difficult, but the other side of that is, um, in order to have really strong buy-in, we need to make sure that as many people who want to be watching the process and feeling part of it, feeling like their voices are heard, then it, it really needs to be something that is interactive and, um, that people can see. So there, that core group would certainly put forward the reforms, but, um, anybody that's not for, part of that core group should be able to see that process and have their own buy-in and make sure that their voice is heard through it. She talked a bit about one, some of the, the process that they're seeing. So kind of bringing people together, look, digging in on police policies. How the police policies were created. That a lot of them were driven by being Kalia accredited, which is that 21st century policing, um, piece. And, um, Officer Hogan, if I miss saying anything, feel free to jump in and correct me. And, uh, not that that. And not that that necessarily would mean that those policies wouldn't change if we believed that, you know, if this group believed that it was something, or a community we would, we believe, that was something that would change. But it's also, that's a decision to make. If you no longer want to be Kalia accredited, then changing the policies is, you might want to continue to be Kalia accredited, which means certain policies have to be in place. Looking at data, really digging into data, and then, and then really starting to talk about meaningful reform. The, everyone being up, reading through the 21st Century Policing Strategy Report. And then also, they were looking to pull from the civilian police academy. So that's something there I asked about because I think that would be interesting to do. I know it's a big commitment, but I'm sure several council members would also like to do that. And they're, so they're going to let us know the next time that they have a class that they're able to offer that with COVID. I think that is everything on the, I think that's everything from our leadership committee meeting. Yeah. Does anybody have any questions on those pieces?
Tom has.
Tom?
Yeah Jenny, I wanted to find out, how is the council, you've talked about other groups, but you really didn't talk about how the council would be involved. I'm just curious.
Yeah, so the council would definitely have representation. We would have limited representation. And, and I just, I probably, I wanted to check in with Kelly and Corey. Should I just keep talking about it, or did you?
Yeah, no, no. And then just, I mean, the mayor had mentioned how some of the spots, 30 people, that's a lot. I mean, that's a lot for that, the reforms. We were talking about the reforms, right? I didn't miss that. So our proposal would be for the head of finance, the head of public safety and the head of human rights to be a part of, of that committee. We want obviously, community input. And of course, Council President Ellis would be a part of that, that group also. I mean, whatever it takes to get us to the correct reforms and what's going to be best for our folks, we'll do. But I mean, it's, it's a, the dynamic process. I mean, we, again, there are a lot of stuff that's subject to change. I think the idea is to get the most input from, from the most folks and especially impacted communities. That, that's really important in this process. But again, it's, 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 we're offering some of the stuff that the mayor presented to us, but also our thoughts on how the process should go as, as leadership of the council and how we should be able to weigh in and contribute to the conversation, so.
I just want to follow up on that real fast because, you know, I've been watching the governor every day and I've been sending out my reports to you folks when it, when it happens. The governor specifically said, this is a legislative law. So we are going to have to vote on it at some point. I just want to make sure, that's what the executive order said, that the legislature branch of the municipality should vote on it. So, you know, I mean, I have ideas and stuff that I want to talk about. So I'm just wondering, if I can't do it through the council, do I have to do it through a community group?
No, that's, that's, that is one of the things that we talked about. And that was one of the reasons why I said, I mean, the mayor initially said to us that she was expecting to have the president of the common council and the chair of public safety from the common council representative. And that was it. In turn, kind of owning these two separate sides, you can't have an unreality committee. It's not, it doesn't make sense to have the entire council on the committee. However, if you want to have buy-in from the council and ensure that we are all able to talk about it in an intelligent way, understand it and believe in it enough to vote, then that's one of the reasons why we were pushing to make sure that, yes, there, we are able to participate. And the other thing is, I'm assuming every member wants to see this, you know, wants to watch the, to know what's going on. I mean, this is something that, this is happening, this is impacting all of our residents in the city. And we need to make sure that we are properly representing the city as a whole. And it's going to take buy-in from the entire city. So Joe, I see your hand. Judy put her virtual hand up first, so I'll get you an after.
Send me some time, Judy.
Oh, but Judy, you're muted.
Thank you. Kelly, as a general comment, I have to say that of all the members when they're speaking, I have the most difficult time hearing you, so just in general. But specifically, I did not hear what the third committee was. It was finance, public safety.
Human rights.
And human, and human rights. But I'd also maybe make an argument for council operations and ethics too. But, and again, this, this is us, we're still trying to put forth an idea of what we think or how we think we should participate as a council. Again, it does have to come back to us for us to sign off on this. So it makes more sense for us to be a part of the process all along and be okay with this stuff than to try to, than to get something dumped on our laps and have us, you know, push back on it at the end. So that's, that's why I think we really, really need to be a part of the process. And I, I would argue that since we can all be a part of it, that through our discussions, that, that if members have issues or want to give input, that we have our discussions and, and the representatives that will be a part of that committee represent the interest of the council when we're having those discussions. Because I mean, clear, it's clear, we have to sign off on this. So we have a say. We clearly have a say.
Okay, so somebody just tried to mute me. I was just getting clarification on one thing that, that I had not heard. My, my other comment is, I didn't, I don't believe I heard the Community Police Review Board as.
I did say CPRB, so I just.
Okay.
I shortened term.
I heard.
Yeah, and ACT PAC, ACT PAC and CPRB, yep.
Okay. And then I, I think it's really important to have somebody like Alice Green.
There's a lot of members. I would recommend sending them to David Gallin. That, I think if we sit and talk about all of the different community members, I, I, that's why I think a lot of members are going to have a lot of important ideas on that and they should be sent to David so that the American can kind of deal with that.
But you guys are having the conversation about what is the process and what is the membership? And I'm basically saying as a council member, I think the council leadership, you know, so we can all, you know, send in our little, you know, comments. I really think the council leadership should have somebody who has looked at these issues. The administration may not like what Alice Green has to say at times about issues, but I think that that perspective and her knowledge should be at the table. Somebody like Mark Michler as well. So that I, I will pass on my comments to David Gallin. But I, you know, I, I think the leadership needs to hear from council members about also, about who we think should be serving in this capacity.
Absolutely. And it's funny to us too. Absolutely.
Right, right. And I, and I would say, and I, and I don't want to speak for the mayor, but through conversations between, you know, with her and her, her administration and staff, those names have come up, those names have always been a part of the conversation of regarding policing in this city. So they, yeah, they're being talked about, they're going to be included. So if not included by her, although we've had those conversations, they'll be put forth by us to be a part of.
Judy, definitely include us as well because especially if we're seeing similar, a lot of similar names coming up to advocate for that on a leadership level, makes a lot of sense. Joe, and then, oh, so I see your, your virtual hand, so you'll be after.
We have reforms on our calendar right now, okay, from ACT PAC, from CPRB. And what you brought up tonight, sounds like we're going ahead, which this, if the governor's looking for a package, this should be part of the package.
Right. And, and, and I do agree to an extent, but some of the reforms with the CPRB and some of the stuff that we're trying to do, I mean, we were going forward with that stuff, whether the governor repeal 50, or the legislature repeal 50 or not. I mean, there's some things that are in our wheelhouse and our control. There was an, an interest expressed by the mayor in being in, you know, having joint conversations and moving forward with this stuff, which, which we will do. But some of the reforms were proposed and we're not excluding, we're not excluding the mayor, but a lot of this stuff, and, and, and we can, we don't.
I guess like, like there's a piece out there on cameras also, okay? But if this, this board that's set up 30 some people, they might not feel the same way. Now that they come back and say, you know, can you, you know, change this a little bit, whatever? I, I don't know. I'm just saying there's, you know.
And that, and that's fine. Those folks will be invited to public safety meetings and to be a part of the conversation. So all of that stuff will be included. We're, I, I think we're all thinking the same, we're all moving in the same direction. I know that no one's going to be, you know, out of whack with.
Sounds like we're ready to move on some of these right now and this board hasn't been established. So were we leaving them out?
We're, the intention is not to leave them out, those folks that would. Right. I, I, I think our, our process will be a public process. So, and we're looking for input from a lot, probably, I'd say a lot of the same folks that will be a part of that effort. Again, we don't want to duplicate effort, waste time or any of that stuff. I think we're all on, in general, on the same page. So when we're having those conversations, I think we'll respect what folks say, they'll be part of the process. And, and it's not about us, it's about, it's about them and what's, but what's best for the community. So I, I think that'll be included. It will definitely be included.
Everybody, happy 4th of July. Stay safe. I gotta go.
All right, Joe. Thank you. All right. You have a great weekend. So.
Go ahead, Owusu.
I'm sure. Yeah, I just want to say that I'm a little bit concerned about some of the stuff that I'm hearing on this issue. From my understanding, I, I thought the governor wanted the legislative body of the municipality to lead on this. I'm hearing sending stuff to the mayor's office, sending stuff to David. I mean, I was under pressure, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I was under the impression that the governor wanted the legislative body to lead on this issue. So I'm just a little bit worried that we're deferring a lot to the executive rather than taking charge on this, on this executive order, so.
We're not, Richard, it looks like you want to weigh in. So, but, but no, no, we're not deferring our responsibilities or not doing what we need to do. Again, regardless of what the governor said or offered up in his executive order, we're already moving in that direction prior to that. We don't need the governor to okay what we're doing as a body. If we agree on these things, we move, we'll move forward with it. We'll have hearty and thoughtful discussions on this and we'll, we'll act accordingly. Again, what the governor, his executive order doesn't govern what we do. It doesn't. He wants us to be a part of that conversation, but we, we have something different going on. But Richard, do you want to add something?
I, I want to know if that's Owusu's dog. Not this time.
No, it's, it's, it's my dog's.
Okay. Well, I want, the governor's executive order does set out the, the format. And, you know, whether we, the bye-bye or not, but the governor's executive order does set forth the format, where basically it's the chief and the mayor that's put, puts together this process that's supposed to be transparent and inclusive and develops the recommendations that will come back to the council for approval. You know, that, that's the construct he set out. I think we have a responsibility, you know, on our own also, to move on what we want to do. And, you know, in terms of the pieces that are going to be introduced on Monday night, are we going to move forward with the Public Safety Committee discussion on those? Or are they just going to be on the table for discussion as part of this larger process? How do we want to approach all of that?
So I would say that as a part of our leadership meetings, the mayor discussed and, and, and actually kind of had a request that we kind of move along together and, and do that, that kind of thing. But I, I think we have an opportunity and we have our voice and we, we, again, we don't need to require that, that executive order. But also, I, I'd like members to think that we're, all of us are thinking the same, we're moving in the same direction. The reforms are the same, but we, I, I don't want to, my conversation to the mayor was that, okay, will we take into consideration what you're thinking and what you would like to happen, but we're, we're going to take that into consideration and move forward. That was a part of the leadership conversation. If, if things change, it's different, but I, I don't see that we, we need, we should be a part of the larger process, but there's some things that need to happen now. And that, that was my, that was my thinking. I don't know.
Kelly, Kelly, I, I disagree. Part of the reason that we're, you know, that contribute to what we're in now is because we got a bunch of people that, you know, pretty much don't have the contacts with the community like, like has been in the past. And like, when you don't have those relationships in the community, you're not going to be able to deal with the storm that we just dealt with. And so I think that people's concern about the coroner office having control over that is just like we're making another community, another group that's not going to be able to effectively address it. So, you know, I would like to see us have some input on, you know, the formation of that group to make sure we get the right people sitting at the table.
Right. And what I'm saying is, for our effort in this, our, the reforms we just put forth and resolutions and ordinances, that, that's, that's ours. It's not, it's not even having input. We have total input in that. We control that process. We, it, it's not, I understand what you're saying. You want to have a voice in this larger committee, but some of the things that we're putting forth, the reforms that we're putting forth, that, those are ours. We, we don't, we control that. So I don't understand your.
If I could just jump in, I, what I would say is that Owusu and Derek, we agree. And I'm, I'm glad that you're talking about these different things because it, it does matter. It does matter exactly to push forward with certain things. We're going to vote on it, we have to have buy-in with it. And so that's a lot of what we've talked about with the transparency of the process, but you're right. I mean, and Judy mentioned it too, we should have a say in exactly who was, who's in the committee. And so I think that's something that we can certainly bring up and say, listen, as a, as a body that's going to have to vote on this, we want to say, and who's at the table. And we're not going to be comfortable voting on this unless we have more of a say on exactly who's going to be at the table and who's going to be part of the process.
I agree. I, I'm agreeing. But lastly, my argument is that for the stuff that we're doing, we are the process. We, we want buy-in from the community. So we, we control and are, we oversee that process. So while the executive order and the charge from the governor is important, I, I personally, I think anything that we would do in our capacity as legislators here in the city will have a far greater impact, and it's just me, than what the governor put forth. But, and, but maybe I'm wrong. And we control that process. And that's the last I'll say about that. Anyone else?
The people are talking, Kelly, and it's just. The people are talking, Kelly, and it's just, we can't get, you know, we can't ignore the people's concerns. And, you know, the governor heard it, and it looks like the governor is expecting local leaders to do something about it. And, you know, I think every, you know, you heard it from three different people that, you know, probably didn't talk before we got on this call. And it's pretty consistent that, you know, we want to be, we want to have fair representation on that, on that group. And, you know, it shouldn't be coming from one direction. And that's, that's the concern, I think, that people are expressing.
Okay, anyone else? Any thoughts? Is that you raising your hand, Richard, or scratching your head?
Yeah, right, both. I have a different question, not, if this topic is done.
I guess at this point, we are done, and go ahead.
Yeah, I was just curious in terms of our next meeting on, what, Monday? Whether we are scheduled to be back in the chamber or is that still up in the air?
It's still remote, though. Executive orders, executive order is still in effect that same day. From my contacts with the governor's office, they are going to extend the executive order. It's just they're waiting literally the day of it expires to extend it.
All right. So that means we're not going to, we.
Means you're staying on Thousand Islands.
Virtual, that's right, virtual.
Yeah, no, yeah. I'm a little tired of virtual.
Yeah, right. So nothing, no one has anything?
Generally, is City Hall open if we were to stop by to check, I don't know what's in our boxes or to get our badges?
It's open to the, yes, you can come in. It's open to the general public. Your badges are available. The only thing that you'll see that's different is you have to walk through the ropes and go through the x-ray machines, but you have full and complete access. There are new security guards that are down there, so they may not be familiar with all your wonderful faces. And I apologize because I was almost prohibited from coming in by one of the police officers, so.
Yeah.
And now.
Okay.
Bring your lunch.
Yeah, so with that.
And, you know, is the passport, are you still doing passports or is that on hold or?
No, we have resumed offering many of our services. We're just doing them by appointment only to allow us to disinfect in between customers. Due to COVID occupancy, we only have three members from the general public. So we can only offer assistance to three customers at a time. And it's, you know, better to schedule. The only thing with the passport process that we are not providing is photos because photos require them to take their masks off and extends the process. And I think with research, if you're exposed to someone fifteen minutes or more, the likelihood of transmission of COVID increases. So we're trying to factor all of that in. I could tell you that at the Department of State, they have issued an alert to us to let us know that, I think, on average, the process, once they get your application, is about ten to twelve weeks. They're not able to turn them around as fast as they were in the past because they're still operating with reduced staffing.
Okay, anyone else? If not, motion to adjourn?
Second. Second.
All right, all right. Meeting adjourned.
Good night, everybody.